Yeah, okay, yeah. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a really neat program to tell you about. Jen Myers, our communications specialist, ran a story about them in the fall, but we were worried that you might not see it otherwise, and we're looking for an opportunity to bring it to you. This is a special program run by, started by a couple of staff. They do this voluntarily and is very, very popular. I'll have the principal of the school is with us, Ms. Kathleen Huntley. I'd like her to introduce and tell us a little bit more about the program.
So, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Kathleen Huntley, proud principal of Lincoln Elementary School, and I'm also here with Assistant Principal Dr. Keryen Driscoll. I assure you that the entire Abraham Lincoln Elementary School is excited about this Spotlight Award honoring baseball coaches, Megan Mead, who is actually our school nurse, and Tyler Jones, who was the SEL tutor at Lincoln School and is so committed to us that he's continued to work with us in our baseball program at Lincoln, even though he is now a PE teacher at the Washington School, so we are very blessed. These two individuals have had a tremendously positive impact on most Lincoln students and staff members. They volunteer their time to provide students with equipment, expertise, and, most importantly, support as they inspire the teens' social and emotional well-being and development. Of course, they're also there to teach them to catch, to throw, to hit the ball, to run the bases, and to cheer each other on. And I can go on and on about the impact that this program has had, but I think it speaks volumes when a student can share this, their feelings with all of you. So I'd like to invite 4th grade student William Nichols here.
My coaches, we are so, so lucky to have Mr. Jones and Nurse Megan coaching our baseball team for Lincoln School. This was my first year on the Lincoln baseball team. I really like to be in the outfield or the catcher, and I like to bat. They teach us that we are all learning that winning doesn't matter, just have fun. No matter what happens, our coaches try to help us to be good sports. They always tell us to work together as a team to help each other when someone is feeling down, even during the school day, not just on the field. For example, today, one of my teammates fell on the floor because his shoes were untied. I helped him get up, I picked him, I picked up his glasses, and I walked him to the nurse. I did this because our coaches teaches us to be kind. Our coaches care a lot about us. They care about our safety, sportsmanship, having fun, and learning about baseball. They really deserve the Spotlight Award. Thank you.
My name is Tyler Jones. I want to, on behalf of the whole Lincoln School community, I want to thank you all for having us here. It is, gosh, it's a privilege to be invited. I'm grateful for the recognition, but most of all, it is an honor to be here representing our student athletes and their families, not just our current 4th graders, but our 5th graders and our 6th graders who got this program off the ground. And in a couple of months, we'll have a new group of 3rd graders to add to the baseball I want to tell you what the club is, what it's all about, and where I hope to see it go in the future. What it is, is an after-school program. It is open to any Lincoln student. There are no prerequisites. We take kids who have played before, kids who have never put a glove on. It does not matter. It's about accessibility. One of the things that I've always wanted to create is something that gives kids another option for an activity that gets out, gets them outdoors, gets them active, but is easily accessible, and the school has been a great way to do that. We're fortunate to have a baseball field there on campus, and, you know, it's all that we ask from families is to sign the permission slip and pick the kids up. There's no cost. It's just really about accessibility. One of the other reasons for starting it was wanted to give these kids a way to experience, even as an introduction, what it means to be a student athlete. And William will tell you, or any of the kids will tell you, because they hear it all the time, that phrase, "Student athlete, student comes first." Playing ball is a privilege that we earn by doing our jobs during the school day, and then we get to take it outside and play ball. The expectations for the club, which are mutual between players and coaches, are safety, respect, and effort. We use real baseballs, real metal bats, helmets, real catcher's gear, and we start the program by teaching them how to use those things safely. As coaches, our job is to keep them safe, their job is to make safe choices, whether that's at practice or during school. As far as respect, it's a very broad term, but we find ways, every practice, every day, really, to demonstrate what respect is, how we can apply it, and we treat players with respect, and we expect them to treat each other with respect, themselves, their peers in school, their teachers, their families, across the board. As far as effort, another thing that the kids hear from me a lot is, "I don't care about the best, I just want your best." And baseball is an incredibly hard game. There is so much failure. Maybe, maybe someone has heard the sentiment, it's attributed to Ted Williams, that baseball is the only endeavor where you can fail seven times out of 10 and be considered one of the best to do it. That, that effort of saying, you know what, I did the best I could, even though I failed today, you get the next at bat, you get the next practice, you get the next school day. So whatever it is, whether it's on the field or in the classroom, all we ask is for the best that you've got. We've had a lot of really, really cool experiences since starting in March of '22. One group, we took them to Worcester for a Worcester Red Sox game, saw fireworks after the game, that was pretty cool. There were a couple of students who said, "I've never seen fireworks." I thought, wow, we get to go see a real ballgame, and peanuts and Cracker Jack, the whole, the whole thing. We had a team dinner back in November at the school, which was potluck style. So, ah, gosh, I think there were 15 or 16 families who brought food, and we encouraged them to bring their food, you know, your family recipes, something that expresses your culture. You know, we certainly could have ordered pizza, or, you know, something like that, but it was really cool to get the flavors and, and the feeling and the love that comes in food that, you know, somebody makes at home, a family recipe. That was really fun. We played, over the summer, we played a game against a Clemente League team at North Common Park. That was kind of a, that was an unofficial event, but I put out, we put out the call to the families and said, "Hey, if you can make it, we'll be there Saturday morning." And we fielded a team and had a great time. It's, it's just really been a great experience, and my hope for it is essentially to play more games. We play at least one game a year, which happens at the end of 4th grade, one of the last days of the school year, the 4th grade club gets to play against the Lincoln staff. And I will tell you that that is a real ballgame. We have everything from the National Anthem to three outs, three strikes. It is a real baseball game, and it is not the kind of thing where, oh, the kids get to win because that's nice for, no, it's competitive. But that's always one of my proudest moments. I tell the kids before each game, "I think we can win, I hope we win, but what I want is for the whole school," because the whole school comes out and watches, "I want the whole school and anybody who walks by and sees it to see a baseball team that loves each other." So far, they've done that. We're looking forward to the game again this spring. We've got plenty of work to do. But I hope to have more games for them. We will take any game that we can get, but I think one of the coolest things would be to have other elementary schools that have a program. We scrimmage, and we play against each other, and that's a great opportunity for them to grow in sportsmanship, but there is nothing like driving over to somebody else's field and seeing somebody else wearing different colors and, and having that experience. That brings a team together like few other things. So I know there are elementary schools in the city that have fields on campus. I would love to see that happen someday, but for the time being, it's an honor to represent the players, kids that have put blood, sweat, and tears out there, and I'm so proud of them. Thank you for having us and having me speak about it. Appreciate it.
Coach, thank you very much. Thank you. Go Landchar. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you very much. Again, I want to, I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate, should we say, in getting this program, getting this program to, to work. And I think what you just mentioned is to have all the other elementary schools be part of it. I think that's, that's a great idea. And when you mentioned a student, a student athlete, a student being the number one, I think that's so important. And it also teaches us to be a member of a team and to work together. And it also teaches us how to win and lose. So again, I congratulate you for this, for this program, and I look forward to seeing more of it. All right, thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
I so much appreciate all that you do because I have a 12-year-old who is extremely active, and he loves baseball. And we are from Centerville, which has a beautiful baseball field, but does not have a school baseball program after school. So what if we almost made a Lowell Public Schools baseball team against the rest of the world, where there are Boomers and there are everybody else in the leagues, that, you know, we trained with you, you know what I mean? And we were able to come together in one field and be Lowell Public Schools. And I just, my mind just was exploding during your presentation, because I just thought, like, what you were saying was so pertinent to what all of our kids need, and how can we get that to be in all of our middle schools and/or to integrate with your program, instead of it just being once, once a year, being a consistent model?
Thank you. Mr. Bahu?
Coach, I think you started this as a volunteer, just to see if you got some excitement about it, and it looks to me like you're fielding players, you're teaching them respect, you're teaching them camaraderie, you're teaching them how to be social, and you're going to the next level regularly by taking them to the Worcester Red Sox game and giving them an experience of a lifetime by, by going, by, I'm speaking to the people at Clemente Park, and developing a game and feeling the excitement of their parents at the game and your children's parents at the game. You, William, the whole staff over at the Lincoln School deserve congratulations, and hopefully this keeps growing. I know I was a coach at Cali Park many years ago, and I used to use the Lincoln Field as a place to go ahead and have practices and such, and I know the excitement that it brings to kids. So congratulations, we look forward to it growing, and we will do our best to assist you in helping it grow.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you. Moving on, Minutes, 4.1, the approval of the Minutes of the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of December 11, 2024, and the motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call. No roll call. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. So, five. Want to do a roll call or not? Five, permission to enter, January 15, 2025, the motion to approve the permission by Ms. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Conway. Ms. Rossi, go ahead.
In terms of the scheduling, the, 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 the four, Michelle Phillips to provide low high school support and define their highlight, uh, reimagine master schedule and develop a work in, wouldn't the, the people that we put in charge of our schedules and replace teachers, wouldn't that be a job over there because they know that's why we came for $2,000, $100,000, or, as another consideration coming in to change water?
Thank you for your question, Ms. Rossi. I'm going to turn it to Ms. Crocker, please.
Thank you. Ms. Rossi, we've had a scheduling committee that has worked through Lowell High School for the past 14 months, and the, I'll talk about this actually a little bit later in my goal presentation for you, but we are at the point where some consultancy on the different models, so we have a couple of different models shaped. We do have the physical resources to actually build the schedule, but there are a few different considerations for models that are dependent on things like union contracts, the types of Chapter 74 programming we're hoping to offer, et cetera. So we do have funding available for this consultant. It was actually written into the Bar Foundation grant, so it's part of the Portrait of a Graduate work. It's already built into the plan, so she has been embedded, her services were embedded as part of the grant funds.
So I guess, what will she provide as extra? Like, what, what will make this more beneficial than our own staff?
Thank you, yes. So our own staff is very involved, there's been a committee that's very involved, so it will ultimately represent their work. What she is able to do with 20 years of scheduling expertise and consultancy is be able to advise on things that will be benefits and detriments to each of the different scheduling models adopted, and help problem solve ahead of adoption, so that when we roll that out and the intent is the '26-'27 school year, we have success from day one. We don't want to get into a position where we are moving to something different that is completely outside of what we have known for a traditional Lowell High School schedule and not have the benefit of an expert who's done that work alongside us. And we're grateful for the funding that is provided already in the grant to support our staff to do that work. Just keeping in mind that the Scheduling Committee is comprised of people that also have other full-time jobs as teachers, department chairs, et cetera, so there is a limited amount of bandwidth that those individuals can devote to a lift of a schedule for a 3,500-student comprehensive high school. So it is, it's a big undertaking, and we're grateful to have the consideration for this funding. Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Lay. Ms. Martin. Mia Rook.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Five yeas, two absent.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to take 10-4 out of order, please.
Motion by Ms. Doherty, take 10-4 out of order, seconded by Ms. Rossi. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 10-4 is our new business, the approval of update high school graduation requirements. We do have a speaker that came to us earlier looking to address the school committee, a motion to allow by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Ma'am?
Marie Yoke.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Marie Yoke, class of 2018 from Lowell High School. I completed my four years at Lowell High School, graduated, and received a certificate of attendance. My attendance record from the 3rd grade to high school was perfect attendance. I got told that I wasn't able to receive or do anything because of my disability. Also, I took the Lowell Math MCAS one time, and I failed. I asked the teacher if I can retake the Math MCAS again, and she mentioned to me no. I came to adult ed because the MCAS that got required at high school, diploma, but now that the MCAS is pulled out, the graduation requirement, students with disability or not should deserve a high school diploma. It's not fair with students with disabilities and myself. Students and myself even worked hard to get that high school diploma. I hope it's reactive.
Thank you, Ms. Yoke, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Superintendent, can we refer this to you and try to figure something out?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I understand the intention, by the way, I should begin by saying what courage and bravery you showed in coming to speak to the school committee tonight, and it's a credit to you, so well done for doing that. If I understand the tenor of your remarks, the MCAS test is no longer required, and so you, you, you won't have to take it again, you won't need to take it again in order to graduate from high school. Is that what, part of what we're discussing here?
Well, basically, what she's saying is, she graduated from Lowell High School, and she got a certificate of attendance.
Right, right.
But that's because of her disability. But with the MCAS requirements that are no longer going to be active, I do understand that the state is trying to figure out which way to go about this, but she has been in the adult ed ever since she left Lowell High, and she has passed the math already, and she's been two points away. She just wants to go on to college.
Got it.
That's all she wants. She wants to be just like everybody else.
Thank you. May, I'm going to take, the mayor, I think, had a good suggestion, which is, so that I will be happy to reach out to you and to work with you on what options are available so that she can graduate with a diploma and go to college. I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
We'll explore that with you. We have your contact, I believe, Ms. Sheehan, from the, from signing up to speak, and I'll use that as a way to, to, to reach you. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just go to Ms. Grant for a moment as well?
Marie and I actually talked in the hallway. I told her I would follow up with her on Friday.
Awesome.
As well, yep.
Great. Very well done.
Thank you for having me.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming. Turning to the agenda, six memorials. Yes.
Are we going to go over all this, or?
Oh, sorry, Jesus. Yeah.
I have a couple of questions on that.
I was going to go back to it and vote on it later on, but if you want to do it now, it's fine.
Where it says the FISED, I'm just wondering, through you to the superintendent, if we have a student that plays sports, does they use that in lieu of the FISED for a semester so they could perhaps take another course or do something else?
To my knowledge, no, Mr. Conway, and it's a great question. It seems like a no-brainer. But I believe that there are some requirements of FISED curriculum that students learn specific things in FISED that wouldn't be covered necessarily in playing a sport. So you must take FISED in order to get that credit.
Who makes this? Is this the state or?
The state.
Okay, because I know that's been done for years.
There are exceptions, yes.
No, I'm just saying it was done regularly for years. And, but they get rid of that?
We never did it.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Doherty, go ahead.
This is one of the points of contention for me, that we have other school districts that do that, but we never officially did it in Lowell. I'd love to revisit that issue because I know other districts are able to do it.
Well, the reason why I say that is because I played baseball, and I did not take FISED in the season that I was playing baseball.
So maybe they did it in those days?
I was going to say.
I think that was a jab.
I mean, I've been around for, you know.
When I was there, it didn't happen.
Well, all right.
It's sort of my 30th reunion, so yeah, when I was there, I didn't qualify.
When I was there, you skipped.
I did have Mr. Conway as a teacher back then. I did have him as a teacher in history, but yes, but not.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we should move on. The, I have one other question in regards to that. Do we require any community involvement at all with, for graduation?
No.
Didn't we talk about that before?
So there are ongoing discussions about graduation requirements. In particular, we're focused on what's called mass core requirements, and there are plans in place. There's a true line of new and more rigorous course requirements to get a high school diploma. They're going to come in in the next couple of years. What we're looking for here, and what we've been urged by the Department of Education to bring to you, if MCAS is no longer the graduation standard that it was, it's been voted out, we're being encouraged by the Department of Education to clarify with the committee what you want to be the standard. And so you have in front of you what other requirements Lowell High School typically uses, and it's sort of for the time being. In other words, for students who are eligible to graduate in 2025, we need some clarity about what to tell those students so that they can be secure that they know what to get to be eligible to graduate. And that's what we have in front of you. It's only for the, really, the seniors who are due to graduate this year.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Doherty?
I understand that, and I, we are still going to be administering the MCAS, right?
That's correct.
Because I do think we need some measurement tool to see that we're making progress. So I understand that this, the step tonight is really to just officially remove MCAS as a requirement of graduating from Lowell High School. I also want to ask a question for a later date regarding Health Education A and Health Education B being substituted for students who are in ROTC, dance band, and show choir. They don't have to take Health Education A and B. I'd like to get an update on, just to follow up, that we are providing those students, not so much the ROTC, I think they've been doing it for a while, but especially the new ones that were added to this group, that they are getting the requisite health information they're supposed to be getting that you typically don't get in a dance class or show choir. I think that's very important information for our students to be getting. And I know one of the reasons that we beefed up Health Education at the middle school level was to try to offset any losses that would come from a student not getting, you know, two years of health. Thank you. That would be my request.
Thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
I think I have to make a motion to approve. I was just going to end with that.
Yeah, people raise their hands just so I can be sure.
I was just going to say, in an attempt to be leveled off in a playing field, I know the Catholic schools do that NWEA testing, and so maybe that would be a type of standardized testing that we can look into in terms of leveling our students, just to have some form of accountability overall and maybe to even counterpart with them and say, what are you doing that we're not doing, or so forth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
So what I'm hearing is this is policy for this year only.
Correct.
Gradu-, MCAS is not a graduation requirement, and it's a tool that we will keep working on as far as the FISED and the Health Department goes so that we can begin to sort of grow within ourselves in our school district. Is that correct?
That's correct. And as a part of a thing already, we already have plans in place that we hope to roll out over the next couple of years that will increase the standard.
Great. And I hear that there's, and based on this filing, that it looks like there's 134 students that may not have graduated this year for not passing MCAS. However, this year, they will be able to graduate, which is good news for them, by meeting all the other criteria that's in this policy.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Layton. Ms. Martin. Mia Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent.
Six memorials, 6.1, Elektra J. Parisian, retired teacher at Lowell High School. May she rest in peace. Before I apologize, Ms. Prack is actually joining us here this evening. Sorry if I mentioned that at the beginning. So good to see you, and happy new year. Seven motions, 7.1, Mr. Conway, request the superintendent prepare the detailed process, procedure, and plan that are currently in place for the safe and orderly end of school dismissal at Lowell High School. Furthermore, list any and all additional safety measures that are being discussed. Seconded by Mr. Bahu. Mr. Conway?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the superintendent, as we have approximately 3,500 students at Lowell High School in that vicinity. And they're all being dismissed at the same time, which is a Herculean task, needless to say. I've been contacted by a number of people and with a concern on the dismissal. And again, I know it's a rather complicated situation, but the I think that we all will agree that we want to make sure that we have a safe dismissal for all our students, the staff, and also for our partners downtown. And I think that we have seen in the past few months that there have been some issues, and granted, a few feet off the campus itself. But again, these students coming from, for the most part, from the high school. And I think that I have been involved with dismissals at Lowell High for many, many years. And I know that we would certainly take our turns being out in Kirk Street because when you have adults that are out there, kids are less likely to cause issues or act up and so forth. And I myself, this year, have observed that, the other day, I was down there, downtown, and around dismissal time, there was a police car at the end of Kirk Street, and there was one police officer in there. And there was nobody else down Kirk Street except for students. And I think that's something that we have to take a look at. And I know we all get tied up with things, but I remember that, you know, at 2:15, we had to be out there. So at 2 o'clock, you sit down with your clerk, and you say, okay, make sure we do this, this, and that, and I'll be back. And, you know, we would have house masters, house deans, or whatever they're called now. And you'd have them out there. A couple of them would be on Father Maricet Boulevard. You'd have them in Kirk Street, security, and so forth. So these kids, when they see that, they're less likely to cause a bit of an issue, all right? So I'd like to see what the process, the procedure, and the plan is. I know that there is a distinction, of course, between those three words. There's a closeness to it, but you know what I'm talking about. Plus, the fact is, I'm sure that they're sitting down administration and talking about, how do we make things even better? And I'd like to know what type of ideas or safety measures have been discussed for the very near future, too, as far as the dismissal is concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. If the motion passes, we'd welcome this opportunity to report out and to use the opportunity to discuss what we're doing, and as you say, what next we can do. Thank you.
Fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, I would just say that, I mean, I'm right downtown, just, you know, so my offices are right on Kirk Street. Mr. Conway had mentioned this motion to me, and I had shared with him, you know, we just, in the last couple of months, had a episode where, during the dismissal door to one of our buildings got kicked in by a student. You know, it just happens. But I will say that, you know, from the staff perspective, they did kind of go outside, and there were no, there were no adults kind of in the area for them to talk to, to see what may have happened. So I do think that having a more, you know, elevated presence of high school staff on a regular basis that are, you know, kind of monitoring this would be really helpful. You know, to the point, I will say, you know, 3,500 students moving from one point to, you know, kind of getting released, that is, I mean, it's a lot, and I think it's kind of remarkable that we don't have more issues. But I will say that, you know, I know for a lot of the downtown businesses and whatnot, as much as they rely on these students for their livelihood, because, I mean, the students are a very important component of kind of the population downtown, I think they would certainly welcome the opportunity to have a stronger presence of school staff at this kind of critical point when there really is this mass release of thousands of students into the downtown. So I'd certainly support this motion.
All in favor say aye. Opposed motion passes. 7.2, Mr. Bahu, request the superintendent to have property department explore using staff school identification cards to be used as FOB to access their respective schools in accessing Lowell Public School buildings. Seconded by Ms. Darosi. Mr. Bahu?
So it's been brought to my attention that our staff has not only their ID cards, but also has a FOB in order to get into the school. Sometimes FOBS get lost, I'm not entirely sure, as ID cards do. But I'm curious if we could sort of study the feasibility of if we could use the ID cards as the FOB itself for the reason being that it would sort of ensure that we know that the person has access. It's not essentially a dropped FOB, and the person has access essentially to that building. I'm not sure if the FOBS work throughout the whole school district, and I could go from one building to another if I had a FOB, or if it's just working for that particular school. My guess is they sort of make them work for that particular school. However, it's about access points. It's also a way to ensure that everybody has their ID card on them. And lastly, it's also a way to add security to the building itself. So if there's anything that's ever happening, we basically know who's in the building, and it's not guesswork to see if I arrived at work today or not. So yeah, I'm just looking to have a feasibility study on this to see if it would work. My guess is you already have the security device to have the doors lock and unlock with the FOB. Can it be done with the IDs as well by a simple sticker or an issuance the following year? So if you could just look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Ms. Darosi?
Yes, and it's been eons, I feel like, since I've worked at Lowell High School. So I forget, but in the current district I work in, that is how we enter the building, with our ID badge and the barcode. And so if I enter and I steal all of the pencils in the building, they know it's me. So just to give a simple example, but I guess there is a way to do it, and I forget what it was like working at Lowell High School, but I love this motion, and I think it has a lot of substance to just accountability overall for the district. Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Opposed motion passes. Excuse me. 7.3, Mr. Bahu, request the superintendent to have monthly reports on the status of repairs that are taking place at the Riddick Athletic Complex and Freshman Academy. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Mr. Bahu?
In light of the whole building project that has been taking place, it seems like sometimes things are not working correctly, such as bleachers or ceiling tiles being leaked upon, or doors that are not working correctly. And it's starting to be a bit cumbersome to the to the people that are trying to watch over it, ensure that the contracting work is done correctly. So I'm not looking for something district-wide, but I am looking for anything that has been newly renovated, or I'm sorry, or newly constructed, such as the fieldhouse or the new freshman academy, door locks, door handles falling off, people getting stuck on elevators in rooms and such like that. And if there is a checklist of what needs to be done, it would be nice for us to know so that when we're watching over the large sum of money that this school district is paying for or this, our community is paying for, it would be nice to know that we are sort of monitoring that and making sure everything's going to work upon completion. So that's what this motion is about.
All in favor say aye. Opposed motion passes. 7.4, Ms. Darosi, request the superintendent to report on how the traffic pattern change has impacted the Green Hill School. Seconded by Mr. Conway. Mr. Rossi?
Yes, so going forward into the new year, I know a lot of parents and teachers had apprehension because the only form of communication was through a class dojo, apparently, of the new traffic pattern. I know I had reached out to Melanie Gilbert to ask her to please to add that into the Little Sun, but I guess as of the first of the new year, and when schools started, I was curious as to how that's going. Is there enough security guards? Is there enough staff out there? Is there parking? Is Mrs. McNamara happy? All of those things are very important to me.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Opposed motion passes. 7.5, Ms. Darosi, request the superintendent to work with NRT and the Transportation Department to create an easy access link on the Lowell Public Schools website to identify if a bus may be delayed and specify an estimated amount of time delayed, as well as to specify if the driver has a different bus number or what bus number they should be expecting for both AM and PM routes in order to provide staff and parents to prepare. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Mr. Rossi?
As a teacher who does bus duty, I find this imperative because it not only lets us know if a bus is going to be late, but if a bus has changed its number. And when I looked on our website, I found that it was essentially a Google Sheets. And they work with, and I asked the secretary, who actually inputs the data in? And she said NRT. So I was amazed that they gave So I was amazed that they gave that contribution. So if we could work with them, even in the smallest ways, to update parents and to allow for transparency, and this can be easily uploaded into Where's My Kid, or whatever the app is, it easily uploads right into Google Sheets. So I just want to make it easier for everybody, because it's cold, and no one likes to be waiting outside.
Alvin Fairley says aye. Opposed motion passes. I'm sorry, Ms. Doherty?
No, I said.
Okay, yeah. 7.6, Ms. Del Rossi. Request a superintendent to report on incoming migrant students who receive English language learner support, and provide an update on their progress from registration to present. Secured by Mr. Conway. Ms. Del Rossi.
Yes, I recognize there is also a motion response tonight to ELL learners, but this is more specifically to migrants who might have registered from the ICC, and really tracking their progress from when they registered to now, and the services and the supports that they're receiving. I've heard mixed ways that schools are doing it. Obviously, that's going to happen in a district this large, but I would like to see some type of continuum of services for all of our migrant students in their transition period.
Alvin Fairley says aye. Opposed motion passes. Now moving on to subcommittees. 8.1, the approval of the minutes of the Finance Subcommittee meeting on December 5, 2024. Mr. Bahu.
We had a subcommittee on December 5, 2024, of the Finance Subcommittee. Members present were myself, Mr. Conway, and Ms. Martin, as well as Ms. Del Rossi and Mr. Lay. And finally, the Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Dr. Pinto. We covered the request of the motion from Ms. Doherty, with the Finance update on the purchase orders and payment timelines. And there is a summary involved here, which indicates that we discussed the school committee policy, the purchasing procedures, the outline, the timeline, and based on the purchases, we spoke about when it's received, and how the vendor will get a receipt, I'm sorry, send an invoice, as well as get a receipt, and then how they are paid within two to three weeks. So that was covered by your motion, Ms. Doherty. And then we discussed contractual services, and how we have, when we look at contracts under $5,000, quotes are required, some business practices are approved. And then we're able to go ahead and make those purchases for contracts between $5,000 and $9,999. The committee has to approve the purchase price with what we did today, just to open up the school committee meeting, which is the permission to enter. For contracts between $10,000 and $24,999, the committee's approval is also required by the permission to enter, and three quotes must be included in the requisition. If contracts are over $25,000 or $100,000, there is protocol to go ahead and ensure that everything is being done correctly. We also discussed maybe implementing DocuSign into the finance operations, so school committee members can get the DocuSign and push, have a signature. Signatures are legally binding. They do use them at City Hall. So it would be nice if we could go ahead and use DocuSign to move things along by having school committee approval. We did entertain a motion by Ms. Martin, that was voted on unanimously by myself, Mr. Conway, and Ms. Martin to initiate DocuSign. And then we spoke about possibly, in the Abrams Report, they discussed having a threshold of the amount of money that we would not need for the permission to enter from $5,000, which is what the Abrams Report suggested, to $25,000. We discussed that at length. We felt like we wanted to monitor it up to $10,000. So Mr. Pinto was kind enough to say, hey, I'll be happy to share with you if we're spending more than $10,000, I'm sorry, anything a little less than $10,000. And Ms. Conway indicated if you could include the vendor's name, the contract amount, the contract in the description, it was something that she felt would be something that we could monitor, and then begin to move on increasing the threshold amount from five to a higher amount. Essentially, the meeting ended at about 5:20, and I just asked for approval.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. Thank you for that report, and thank you for the information out of the Finance Department. I know we had quite a bunch of motions that came out the night of my motion. I don't have the exact date. I don't remember when it was. And that's why we didn't discuss it on the floor. It went to subcommittee. I do, however, I feel like there were some pieces in the motion that really weren't fully addressed. And if you want to turn to the page two of the meeting summary, that's where most of my references will be. In the first paragraph, you said, when we were talking about the checks go to vendors, usually within two to three weeks, that's not what I've been hearing, which is why, if we go back to the meeting when I had the motion, I'm sure that I discussed what the concerns were that prompted me to make the motion. I'm hearing that there have been instances with local vendors in particular, where there, a school will call up and say, we want to order this item, right? And you know what? We haven't been paid yet for these other items. And you know, the way we do it, you have to deliver the product or the service and then get paid. And that's been a problem. And I specifically reached out to some of the people that had contacted me, saying, was this in the last, like, eight months? This is this fiscal year? This wasn't last year? No, this, no, I don't mean last year, as in the previous year. I mean, this current academic year, our, of course, our July 1 to June 30 this year. So that's where the concern is with the vendor payment, that if we're not paying within a reasonable time, and if everybody considers 30 days as a reasonable time, that many of these smaller vendors are not going to be able to keep funding, providing the service or the products if they're not getting paid. So there was concern on that. Not so much concerned about the breakdown, about what comes before us, although I do think, I know we've had that, anything over $5,000, we approve, and there's this talk of increasing that amount. And I do, I want to think carefully about that. I think times have changed, things are more expensive, but it is one of our key responsibilities as a board member, is fiduciary oversight. And we have caught things by, within, that fall within that over five, like, can you explain what this is? That kind of thing. But I'm open to more discussion about that. The other areas that concern me, if we go into the reimbursement, down where you have the bullets, there is, the committee does not have a reimbursement policy. And the reason I want to call attention to that is, we are reviewing policy. I think we need to look at the reimbursement policy that we don't have, and perhaps create one, and I would be open to guidance from the administration about that. My understanding is, we can't get reimbursed right now for certain things, like you have to use approved vendors, right? Which was in the motion, asking for the thinking behind that. So I'm going to give you an example. So it could be an approved purchase, but because the school team has to use a certain vendor, and I wrote it down, but I can't find it here, school something, school site, so, I'm sorry?
Specialty.
I can't hear you, or your lips.
School specialty is the name of the.
School specialty, okay. So this particular item might cost an extra $100, because they have to go through a school specialty, as opposed to getting the best price, whether it's Amazon, or whoever has it. So I'd like an understanding why we don't want to get the best price for some of these items. And it doesn't have to do with whether it's an appropriate purchase, because that's handled at the building level, right? The principal signs off and says, yes, you can spend this money on this event, or this student activity, whatever it is that you want to purchase, but you have to pay more for it. So I really want to think about what we do with the reimbursement policy going forward, so we have one that makes sense. And then the issue about paying vendors, to take another look at that, especially for the smaller, local vendors who are not getting paid within a timely way. Now if we could talk about the whole compensation schedule for teachers. In this report, it says that it's, outside regular work hours are governed by the collective bargaining agreements. So the payment schedule for professional development, I know that we bargain the rates. Do we also bargain the timeline? Because if so, why would staff who participated in professional development in June not get paid until fall? So those were examples that were brought to my attention. The other issue with paying for outside services, so let's say, a lot of the programs, which we're going to talk about later tonight, the middle sex, the middle school athletic programs, a lot of the really engaging opportunities that our students are participating in, are being done by our staff, before-school, after-school programs, coaching, all that, right? And they should be compensated. This isn't about that. But the way they're getting paid currently, it seems to be, I don't know if it's on a monthly basis or random, but what I'm hearing is, they get this chunk of a check, right? Because they're being paid every other week, biweekly, they get a check that within the check, it says, extra services. No information about the dates of those services, what were the services? Was it after-school program? Or was it professional development? Now, we only separate out summer school. So again, thinking about, how do we do a better job of communicating and compensating in a way that makes sense for the district? We are the district, I know we're not the only ones, I'm sure, who have had employees leave that we continue to pay, for a while, before we figured it out. So in order to pay for extra services, we must be tracking it. We must be. And if we're tracking it, hopefully we're tracking it, we should be communicating that information to an employee, so a teacher can look at a check and say, okay, I just got this extra money, the extra services, what was that? Was it the professional development meeting? Was it my after-school? So these are some of the areas, and I know we've got a new team in finance. This is what was my intention with asking with this motion, to try to get these kinds of things worked out as we move towards more efficiency, proficiency, and better communication with our team.
Thank you.
I think that was all the main things I wanted to hit on that. We are going to be, as I said, looking at policy around reimbursement. I do think if we could come up with something that allows more flexibility for reimbursement, putting it on the building manager. The principal okay's it, that the cost is appropriate and relevant to what the activity is, and it comes out of his supply budget, or whatever the budget is, that we're not making people spend $100 more for an item, unless there's a very good reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Doherty. Each and all of your questions are very sensible and very worthwhile, giving you a detailed response to. I don't think we should attempt to do that tonight, but we will be happy. I know that Dr. Pinto took notes. We will report back to you on each of those items. One question, if I may. If you hear of a vendor who has the concern that you raised, have you asked the vendor if they tried to contact us?
Actually, I could tell you the name of one of the vendors, because it really stuck in my mind.
You can tell me, and you can tell me now, or you can tell me.
Oh, you don't want to do that? Okay.
What I'm saying is, I guess I'm hinting, please ask the vendor, have they contacted us?
I would think so. Because if a vendor is saying to a school, you know what? I'm already owed so much money from the Lowell Public Schools for this school's, another school's purchase, I'm not willing to provide this for you. What vendor wouldn't?
Ms. Doherty, I've learned through experience, relatively little experience, but enough so far, that would you believe that vendors sometimes don't invoice us at all, or don't invoice us in time? And so these are issues that we deal with. I'm not asking that you grill the vendor, but I'm saying, please ask the vendor, have they been in contact with our finance office? And if they say no, then you urge them to do that. If they say yes, there's an opportunity for you to do some digging, well, what did they tell you, right? And you learn some more. Many of the items you talked about involved interactions with the city, so they're not simply school department, the one about the reimbursement, and how it's coded on their checks and so forth, many of them we need city cooperation for. What I'd like to say, before I get into it further, we will give you a detailed report that responds to all of your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to Dr. Pinto, just a brief question here. Do you meet on a regular basis with the CFO for the city, with Connor Baldwin in his office?
Doc?
Mr. Conway, thank you for the question. Yes. So I do participate in monthly meetings with the CFO. So I'm also invited to give input into the agenda. It's attended by several members of his department, to include the auditor, IT, purchasing, the treasurer, and so on. And so I'm in regular contact with them, and with the auditor, also via phone and email multiple times per week.
I'm glad to hear that, and I suspected that was the answer, but I want to make sure that everyone knows that, you know, that we can, as I've often mentioned, we can nip things in the bud. You know, we had the problem for a number of years, where the left hand didn't know what the right hand was talking about. And that's why I just wanted to make sure. So you feel that that's obviously a very important part, to make, you know, that you understand, or they understand, the bigger, the bigger picture, right? How it all, it's not necessarily the school department versus the city, it's one. It's one unit. So you're working as a team. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
Two things that I forgot to mention. The first one is something that Ms. Doherty spoke about, which was tracking time electronically to reduce proper use, and it would be helpful, so that we know that, you know, when employees leave and need to be removed from the payroll. Dr. Pinto did mention the time clocks, of course, we've negotiated that, are implemented for custodians and cafeteria employees. But that's a nip, it's a little of the iceberg, but at least we're going in the right direction. Secondly, I did not mention, I did mention that Ms. Martin moved to propose full committee executing a contract with DocuSign, and the motion was voted on unanimously. So if we could go ahead and present that to the whole school committee, and take a vote on that, so we could begin to use.
Motion by Mr. Bahu to have the committee execute a contract with DocuSign. Secured by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Lay. Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Yes.
Six aces.
The motion to accept the report, the report of progress by Ms. Del Rossi, secured by Mr. Bahu. Alvin Fairley says aye. Opposed motion passes. Section nine, reports to the superintendent. 9.1, strategic goals progress update. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, one of the key important details for us is responding to your motions, which we consider to be providing you information about the concerns and the needs that you have. But what we spend a considerable amount of time at Central Office doing is working towards our strategic goals. When we set goals last summer, and when the school committee approved our goals in the early fall, we set rigorous goals that we think are very meaningful, and we put ourselves under pressure to deliver on those goals. Tonight, we're beginning a series of reports to you on how we're doing on those goals. So each school committee meeting or so, we will have a report on one or other, or more of our goals. And then, of course, in the summertime, we'll provide you with a full update on whether or not we met targets that we set. Tonight, Ms. Crocker has prepared for you a report on three important goals, and I'd like, unfortunately, by the way, I'm pointing to the packet here, we are unable through our electronic system tonight to put it on the screen, but we do have it? Oh, excuse me. Great, we do have that. You also have the packet. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Crocker, please, to give you the report.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Skinner. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about work that is very near and dear to my heart, and that is the goal of improving schools. And so what you'll see is, on our slide two, we have an overview of some of the key initiatives under the goal areas of, over which I am responsible, and leading some of these initiatives. And I'm going to take a few minutes just to kind of go into detail on each one of them. So slide three shares with you. So slide three shares with you goals around Portrait of a Graduate work. This is not new information for the committee. You've heard about Portrait of a Graduate before, but there are phases of implementation of this grant, and this year's phase is heavily instructionally based. So Portrait of a Graduate is built out to filter down into the classrooms and that classroom experience for students, and the focus this year is shifting the cognitive lift. So making sure that when students are in the classroom, they are the ones doing the primary amount of thinking and work and processing, and it is not relying on the teacher to sort of spoon-feed them information, but they are really grappling with complex text, complex topics, complex problems. And so there's been a number of items that have been undertaken by the folks at Lowell High School that I'll get into briefly. Second under this goal is the establishment of Chapter 74 programs for Lowell High School to debut in the '26-'27 school year, and I'll get into that as well. And then developing a new school schedule, which we've touched on briefly tonight, but I'll go over as well. The next slide overview is Goal 1.4, and that's a goal around data-driven decision-making. So we in the Lowell Public Schools implement cycles of continuous improvement. That means we are constantly, in incremental weeks, so every six to 10 weeks, looking at our student data and making modifications to what we are doing in schools to better target their support and increase their academic outcomes. We established a process this year for schools with their QIPs, their Quality Improvement Plans, to do regular quarterly checks of progress with their school site councils and instructional leadership teams. So I'll show an example of that. And of course, we're developing a new strategic plan. And I know I presented on that in December, so I'm going to do just a quick skim over of that tonight because you got a detailed report last month at our last meeting. And then finally, the differentiated autonomy and support on Slide five, Section 1.5 goal. We're looking, we have been implementing a new model of professional learning that was in response to feedback that we received through various surveys last year about disconnectedness between schools and central office. And our goal this year was really to make sure that the services and support that are available in all of the various offices at our district level meet teachers at the level of common planning time in their schools at the table together. So I'll go through the tiered system that was developed for that. We have two new curricular series that are being implemented at Lowell High School this year for math and for ELA. And then providing professional development to our leaders that is around our district's prioritization plan for language practices across the content area, and that is happening via Leadership Academy. So I'm going to touch on those things briefly. I will try and speak quickly, but please just put your hands up if you want to stop me and ask a question, or certainly save them for the end. I'm happy to entertain any and all questions. So the work at Lowell High School this year around Portrait of a Graduate, as I mentioned, is heavily instructionally based. So we are looking for kids to do the majority of talking in class, kids to do the majority of work in class. And that requires us to sort of retrain staff to be able to plan their lessons, deliver their lessons, in a way that really puts the onus on the students. So it began with some work over the summer, and in the spring, gearing up for this, a launch of the instructional model in August with all LHS staff. And then we have 10 lead teachers, in addition to the instructional coaches and the department chairs at Lowell High School this year, who are ambassadors of the work. These lead teachers are doing learning lunches, they are doing professional development discourse series, and looking at student work protocols. And so they've done this through a binder study, and this work is all supported by the Bar Foundation and the Learning Academy, which are partners that you have allowed us to bring onboard as part of the POG grant to support this work. So on Slide nine, it really details the outline of how that binder study and coaching cadre has been rolled out for you, and some of the next steps that are coming. There are discourse strategies that are being implemented in their PLCs and their department meetings all throughout the next semester. We are just about at the midpoint of the school year. January 22 is the end of Semester One. We're going to be starting Semester Two. So we have additional teachers coming on for binder study, and we are offering a second phase of binder study for the teachers that did it in the first round. So on Slide 10, there's just a little model, a visual model, for people who sort of like to see the work being rolled out in that way. You can see how it's circuitous. Yes.
I was just curious as to what everyday LASW version is? What is LSAW?
So that is our Looking at Student Work Protocol. So our teachers are doing things like common assessments, they are doing things like taking assignments, student work products, and bringing them to a collaborative venue and analyzing them. So it is not always and only best to look at standardized testing data, it's best often to look at authentic student work products, to learn about how well the learning is happening, how well it's landing, how well our students are doing it, meeting the standards that were set forth for those assignments, and it's done in a collaborative way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving on to Slide 11. The work this year, as I mentioned, is really centered around teachers. They are continuing their work with the Center for Culturally Responsive Teaching, and our consultant, Dr. Sharaki Holly, has been working with Lowell High School now for over two years and continues to bring in the culturally responsive teaching aspects to ensure that that remains elevated in the work that we do. On Slide 12, we have outlined the professional practice goals that Lowell High School teachers have centered their work around this year. So you'll see there's good alignment. So teachers have chosen from these goals to focus on their evaluation work this year, and the student learning goals are being measured both by our standardized tests, which we still take. MCAS is still here, and it's still used as a barometer of accountability and progress along with access, but also equally balanced with looking at course grades and looking at those common assessments that we were talking about. So the work at Lowell High School is always, the scale of the work is always among the most complex things when you have a building this large, this many departments, this many teachers. It's a huge lift, but the partnering with our consultation support through the Bar Foundation and TLA really makes a structure that we've been able to follow to see this work seeded. And I'll just underscore again that notion that it's teacher leaders this year in particular that are driving this work forward. They are opening their classrooms, they are coaching other teachers, so it's building a new level of collegiality. So in addition to, you know, having some of our beautiful new buildings open, we have some really exciting new practices there. So you can just see, there's an example on Slide 13 about a discourse stroll. This was the December early release day professional learning activity. So teachers went around to all of the 10 teachers that are a part of the lead teacher program for Portrait of a Graduate, and they are sharing all of their discourse moves, their student cognitive lift moves with one another. And it was exceptionally well-received, and additionally, the folks at Lowell High School are offering things like coffee talks, so coming in before school to coach one another, and then the learning lunches as well. So that really wraps up the major efforts around the Portrait of a Graduate work that are happening so far this year and continuing this spring. Then we turn to Chapter 74 and the update on that. We have some exciting progress. Part A of our initial application was submitted on November 15, and this was an application for what is currently called Criminal Justice, but will be retitled by DESI to the Public Safety Pathway, to encompass a wider array of things like EMS and other types, firefighters' EMS beyond our police and TSA agents and correctional facility officers. So we submitted an application for that, and ISSN, the Information Support Services and Networking, which is cybersecurity. And then we're also seeking to relaunch our marketing program. And so we have to develop an admissions process, there's a proposal put forth, the team continues to work with our consultant, Roger Bourgeois, who has been instrumental in advising the committee to move this work forward. And we are waiting on a call from DESI to submit Part B. So that's the next phase of the application. So when they are done reviewing our Part A, we will be doing Part B. But we are preliminarily running a criminal justice course this spring at Lowell High School, which is not yet part of the pathway, but it is something we are undertaking to start and building it up, and it will be taught collaboratively with Lowell High School staff and with the Lowell Police Department. So we're very excited about that. And then the schedule development update that, you know, was questioned a bit earlier is that we are planning to roll out a new schedule for Lowell High School in the '26-'27 school year to coincide with the start of our anticipated Chapter 74 programs and the culmination of much of the construction that is happening. Initially, we had hoped to be able to launch a new schedule this coming fall, and it is just too premature at this point. We've gotten into the work, we have things like discussions with union partners to have when the model is fully fleshed out. And with the construction still going on, we are working with more limited space than what we will have at the start of the '26-'27 school year. So what we don't want to do is make something that sort of looks like a new schedule and have it sort of halfway implemented. We want it to be really successful when we do implement it. So we think that bringing that consultant onboard and taking the time to do a fully built-out program, and with the knowledge of those Chapter 74 programs and the status of that moving forward, will allow us to have a big launch in '26-'27, but it is all underway. Okay, 1.4, data-driven decision-making. So we have some indicators that we are following around attendance and conduct. I pulled these numbers as of January 5. We set an ambitious goal of decreasing chronic absenteeism by 3% this year. I like to think big. We are actually, as of today, in a better shape. We're down 7 tenths of a percent from last year at this time. We pulled this right after the holiday break, and so we had a couple of days, January 1st, January, sorry, January 2nd and January 3rd, that were lower attended days at the tail end of the holiday break week. And so that, they have rebounded, and today's numbers look even stronger. And then another piece of tracking was around our conduct. And what we did was selected defiance and disrespect and insubordination as our two highest indicators from last year around behavior. And so you'll note that there are a few grade levels I've highlighted that are higher than they were last year. Second grade is a bit higher, and seventh grade is a bit higher. The others are all lower. And then in, at the high school level, you'll see there is a significant increase in the number of conduct referrals in there under these categories. I don't want you to be alarmed by that, though. What we did over the summer was, we cleaned up a lot of our comment reporting codes in X2. We had a lot of duplicative fields. So previously, teachers would pick something like risky behavior, or instead of disorderly conduct. Those are overlapping codes, so we have removed risky behavior. So now all of the ones that were previously measured under risky behavior and disorderly conduct, they would all go under disorderly conduct. So it appears that there has been a really big spike. There hasn't, but it is, one, we're doing a better job recording and reporting, and two, we've gotten rid of some of those extraneous fields, that if we had added all of them back up together, we would look pretty similar to where we're at now. But that is something that we are tracking. On the other side of data, the student progress, we're doing our QIP, quarterly checks of progress. Now, last year, I presented to the committee the new three-year QIP plans that schools developed. I'm so proud of the work that the school site councils and ILTs did around this work, but it is very much ongoing. Every school visit I do, we talk about the school's QIP. And I'm really pleased that principals and school leaders can rattle off their goals and their action steps from the tops of their heads. And they are engaging every quarter, and we're coming up on the next quarter, the midyear, as I mentioned, on the 22nd, where they'll engage in the second quarterly check of progress. So they go through every single goal, every single action step, and every single KPI that they chose for each goal, and they have to provide a form that's attached to their QIP and fill that out. And it's really allowed for some close progress monitoring in ways we just haven't done before. But really, that is where we see that cycle of continuous improvement, because these QIPs are living and breathing documents, and they can alter the action steps. If they meet a marker earlier, they're going to raise that standard for next time. If they haven't met a marker, they're going to change an action step and do something different so that they can get a better result. The next few slides really talk about strategic planning. I've already, again, presented a report, so we can sort of dash through, you've seen the key strengths and key gaps. So I'll just focus on Slide 23, which is our next steps. When I talked to you in December, we were just about to begin Phase Four, so we are in Phase Four now, which is drafting the plan. We are meeting again this week. We have lots of homework. Some of the cabinet members here are attending, all of the cabinet members here are attending our steering committee meetings regularly, along with a representative group. We have additional focus groups. So now that we have some draft priorities, the same focus groups from the parent side, the teacher's side, and the staff's side that were held initially are going to be re-meeting now and going over the priorities that have been whittled down as a result of the over 2,100 responses in pieces of survey information we got from staff, the community, and students and parents, and all of the work that has been done in those initial focus groups. So we are really looking to have a good plan ready to go for the beginning of April, and that times nicely with our budget timeline as well. Our imperative is, if we are creating a new five-year strategic plan, that when we start looking at our budget, if we have decided as a committee, as a community, that these are our major priorities for the next year, two years, up to five years, then these are really the places we have to agree to put our dollars and our funding behind. So there will be opportunities for the public to weigh in on the continuation of, in the final selection of the levers for our strategic plan, and that should time nicely with the information about budget, so we can make really informed decisions as a body about where the dollars that we do have to spend land. Okay? Yes.
Thank you for the extensive report.
I'm not done, but...
Doherty, go ahead.
Thank you, and that was very, it was comprehensive, but I think we needed to hear it. So I've got a quick question. On five, you mentioned this, the new model for professional learning to bring central office staff to the schools monthly, right? I think it was into schools weekly. That doesn't mean you're going into every school every week.
So we have, in our elementary grades, we have our curriculum teams going into their common planning times two times a month.
Okay.
In our middle schools, middle school has common planning time every single day, and they are going in one out of those five days a week.
Got it.
Yep.
And so my question with that is, because I know that has been a longstanding complaint or frustration that many of our staff in the schools didn't feel supported by central office. So this sounds like it's really moving in the right direction. How are we making sure that they feel supported as opposed to Big Brother looking over your shoulder?
So, great question. You have, could not have better segwayed me into the next, the very final section of this presentation. And if you don't mind, I'll take you, because there's a couple of slides.
I finished with the presentation.
I'm so sorry. There's a couple more slides, and it goes over exactly what you're asking for. So if we go to Slide 25, it talks about the new professional learning model pilot. So this is our last goal around differentiated autonomy and support. So there were some of our objectives here was to create that culture of shared support and shared accountability. Shared accountability means that our central office staff feel just as accountable for school and student outcomes as our school staff always have. Those accountability metrics have always come out from DESI. The schools get a school report card, but we don't get a report card for this department or that department. And what we want to do is, everyone who serves the Lowell Public Schools needs to feel that same level of accountability. So it's not that Big Brother is there watching, it's that that partner now feels as responsible for those student outcomes at that school as those teachers and school staff do. And that's been the exciting part of this. So there are Tier One regular opportunities, which we just mentioned, the twice a month for the elementaries, the once a week for the middles, and the high school as well. And then there's a multi-tiered system of support. So the next tier is if there is, through those meetings, another need developed or that uncovered. So I come out, if I am the multilingual education department and I come out and I learn that there is some professional development that's going to take a couple hours that needs to happen at this school, this school can then book a time with me on the next early release day, for example, and I can come out and do a two-hour presentation with a bigger amount of your staff and do a workshop. So that's really Tier Two of the model. And so Tier One is this, on Slide 26, is this very sort of complex rotating schedule that you see. And then on Slide 27 is the Tier Two, where schools can request. So the next slide, schools can request these additional professional learning sessions and whatnot, and we have had several. We have many requests coming through all of the time. The 53 total requests that are screenshotted on the slide deck is not indicative of how many. There are more to be entered, and I would be safe to say we're at 100 or more at this point of additional professional learning activities that have happened. And then on Slide 28, the next slide, you'll see that Tier Three is for our SSOS schools, our schools that continue their turnaround efforts, and we have eight of them. And we have a new learning walk tool, and so they, our district folks... And so they, our district folks partner with our schools and do instructional rounds in those schools. And we have indicators and a new data tracking model so we can look at, based on the indicators in this tool, how are we doing? So when you look at these, the more blue and green you see, the stronger those indicators are. The more yellow and red, that's pointing us to the places that we need to focus on for those schools. So these visualization tools have been really helpful with our SSOS network schools, and we've had other schools in our district latch on and are using this as well. So we're cross-pollinating this practice across. So really, the strengths of the pilot is that everyone feels a sense of increased support. There are predictable opportunities for teachers to meet with central office staff. It's less teacher time away from the classroom because it's happening at the school level, and it's fiscally responsible. We're not paying large amounts for subs and pulling teachers out. And the big part is that leaders are there in the buildings as well. Before, if we did a math training down at central office, the principals didn't get it. The assistant principals didn't get it. There are challenges that come with this model. We do not have enough collaborative planning time built into the, the school day, particularly for our elementary staff, who typically have one common planning time a week. And that is, you know, in their contract, and it's just insufficient. Part of our work at Leadership Academy today was brainstorming ideas for schedules for next year and staffing models that could potentially support additional common planning time for elementary teachers. But we also know that this takes a lot of planning ahead of time and communication so that the central office people are delivering, you know, information that teachers really do need and that's responsive to that, and that we also have a ton of competing interests and priorities. So there's a lot of important things, and not everything is, can be done in a 45- or 50-minute CPT. So some of the next steps have involved in convening working groups. We promised this is just a pilot model, and we've had working groups with our curriculum staff. We actually have a big working group tomorrow with principals. We've had a survey through UTL, so we've gotten lots of feedback about it, and we'll be making refinements and really kind of leaning in potentially to a coaching model moving forward. But that will inform our second semester worth of work and how we build this out next year. So finishing up, we had the last, the last two components of this goal were the curriculum implementation at Lowell High School. So we are implementing high-quality instructional materials in math for grades nine and 10, Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. And we have implemented our Study Sync ELA curriculum for grade nine. It's a two-year goal. We'll be implementing grade 10 next year. And then finally, we have our Leadership Academy goal under this measure as well. And the goal was to have six, a minimum of six professional learning sessions with leaders focused on our district priority. I'm happy to report that today's Leadership Academy and yesterday's were the seventh professional learning session on that priority, and additional sessions are planned for March and May. I am done, and I'm very happy to take additional questions, and I thank you for your keen attention to this important work.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Very well done. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to prolong your, your time on this. I'd like to make a couple of points if I may, just, and some of them are fairly obvious. This is really important work, and, and in addition to responding to committee requests and motion requests, this is really what we believe will improve our schools. And, and part of what you should determine, by the way, future goals reports, Ms. Crocker was particularly ambitious tonight by reporting out on three goals. We won't report out on as many goals in future meetings, but we will each meeting report out on one or two. This is really important work. We believe it's going to move our school. We believe it's been received really well. And when Ms. Doherty asked, how do you know if it feels to the staff like it's a support or, or we asked them, right? And, and sometimes when we ask them, Ms. Crocker talked about working groups that we have at the moment, working on around the professional development model, the, the support from central office staff to the schools has been mixed. The responses that have been mixed. And so we've taken the opportunity mid-year to rethink, and we are drafting a new version of that with input of school principals and staff as well as with central office staff, and that's ongoing. But we believe firmly that if it's support, it needs to feel like support to the people that we're working with.
Mr. Bahu?
I just want to say, I think this is great work. You know, our school district does need a true direction. It hasn't had, been around for a bit. And a five-year plan to see the growth and the potential that we have within the school district as well as we can create in our students is going to be the very best thing that we can all offer. So I know it's difficult to listen to it all, but it's so exciting to see this begin to go ahead and take a life of its own. So, great work. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Sorry, I know I already spoke once on this, and I don't want to prolong. Everyone's freezing. I just want to say, I think the executive summaries are really helpful, too, in terms of boiling it down to the core of what's going on. And one question I had, and I can't find the page. The executive summary where you, you talk about that students felt engaged, that families felt, you know, and the first bullet, do you know what page that is? Because I can't find it now. We, I wanted to know, what was the source of that? Because you said, and Lowell High School students said they loved all the opportunities they had. But the first bullet, you don't say who said it, where that source of information was.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. It's the executive summary slide on Slide 21, and that came from the student focus group at Lowell High School that was part of the strategic plan. So we had two ways students could respond to the survey, but then we also ran multiple focus groups at Lowell High School. So those comments came from either a survey, but more likely directly from the focus groups, right from the students' mouths themselves.
I think the executive summaries were good. Good way to succinctly tell important information, so thank you.
Is that suggested for the future, Ms. Doherty? No, the summaries, Mr. Rossi, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions in regards to who, in new professional learning model pilots here, truly, truly supporting? What are, what are the supports available? When are they available? And are teachers allowed to submit a survey as to whether or not it's been helpful or not? And whether or not you can enter that now, or it comes back on a report? I'm fine with that. I, I know it's a lot, but I just want to hear from teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. I believe we can provide some response to that now. You'll see that some of, if you had access to the full page, you'll see that actually the very first in the, on the, on the actual screenshot that you have, the very first request is actually a teacher. The name of the requester is a teacher at, at a particular school. And you'll see that, if you're in this database, you'll see that quite often. It's not always a principal. It's not always a coach. Teachers themselves can get in and do this requesting for additional support. And again, that often comes out of just having one of these collaborative planning time sessions and realizing, oh, we didn't, 45 minutes was not enough time to do this. It was enough time to learn about the school's needs, and now we need to go to the November Election Day PD, or come back to the January early release time, or we're going to use some Title I funds and run a series of workshops after school. And so who is providing all of this? This particular model is all of our central office staff. It can be support staff from special education. It can be support staff from the mental health office. It will be support staff from our CLSP department, and it will be all of our support staff from curriculum instruction.
Could school committee have access to this as well to see what's going on?
Yes, I'm sure. It's, it very likely is accessible to you via your, your school committee email addresses. And so we'll just make sure you have that link so you can take a peek at that. Thank you. You're very welcome.
Excellent. 9.2, response to motion by Mr. Rossi, December 11th, 2024, I'm guessing, Mr. Superintendent, regarding middle school student disciplinary actions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so there's a report in your packet provided by Ms. Crocker. And if you have questions, we'd be happy to respond.
Thank you for reaching out to all the different schools and getting all of the different summaries of how they are dismissed. I'm more or less concerned on the tracking of the students, even walking outside. And I know it's impossible to really do that. But from what I'm hearing, is there are a lot of incidents going on between dismissal and even getting it onto the bus and on the bus. And I know none of us can do anything to really stop any of that, but if a responsible person can even hear what's going on, that could lead into a lot of what could be going on in the overall school environment. So I guess I just wanted to bring overall attention to that because it seems like the supervision is more laxed at the middle school level.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Rossi, and thank you, Ms. Crocker, for the report. We believe it is our responsibility, and it's not that we can't do much about it. We feel it's our responsibility, and we will tackle it. In the vast majority of cases, in the vast majority of schools, we think there's a very sensible and successful dismissal plan. If you know of, this goes to vendors, this goes to schools. If you know of places where it's not working, we will tackle that. Please tell us of those instances, and we'll be there. Thank you.
9.4, response to motion by Mr. Rossi, August 21st, 2024, regarding reading and math performance.
Thank you, Mrs. Foxrye, for this very detailed report. Although it is just so overall concerning that our students just truly are not in the green, right? They're, they're not achieving, right? And so that's really what formulated this motion in to see what can we do to find... So this is really contrived from iReady data, right? It's contrived from Eureka data. It's contrived from the different programs. But it's, it's really showing that it's not reaching the majority of our population. And I just really want to look for ways to truly reach our unique population in Lowell because we do have a very vibrant community overall. And we need to be able to teach all of our students in ways, even if they don't speak our language, we can reach them, right? And so that's what I was essentially looking for. You know, the DIBELS, I mean, the DIBELS data, you know, 36% in kindergarten, 41% in first grade, 49% in second grade. You know, that, that's some pretty reliable data throughout all time, you know? We, we want to give our students those building blocks, and we want to assure that's happening. And it, it's kind of evident through the report that we're not giving them those building blocks that they truly need. And how can we do that? And if anything I can do to help, let me know. I, I want the best for our community regardless, you know? So, thank you.
9.1, Professor Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Through you to, Mr., to Superintendent, when I'm taking a look at this chart here and the readiness, reading performance levels, it's, it's unbelievable how low they are. I mean, that's the key. That's the key that unlocks everything, the reading. And that's scary that, I mean, that really has to be, that has to be addressed. We have to, I mean, when you have, when you have kindergarten, it's 8%. 8% are either meeting or exceeding expectations. In grade one, only 10% and so forth, right down, right down the line. The, again, when I see these numbers in, in, in black and white, it really, it really is a problem. And I, you know, we as a, as a community are going to really have to, have to address this. You know, the, the staff, the, the school committee and so forth. But anyway, it's, it's down here in black and white, so obviously you know it, too. But, you know, I'd like to see, again, plans coming up that, that can somehow change this, change these numbers because they are scary.
Thank you. Mr. Conway, I'm very grateful for your remarks because they indicate that the committee understands the gravity, particularly when you look at kindergarten. These are students that are new to us in our schools. And so on behalf of our staff, you, you're actually looking at something that demonstrates the challenges that our staff take on. And although, again, I've said many times before, and I'll say it again, the, the progress that we make is great, but it's also needs to be improved. In general, if the general look down through that table that you're referring to, Mr. Conway, and for the most part, it, the, the green bars increase every year. So, so we do make progress with students, but they come to us with, with many needs. I was going to take advantage of your remarks to say, one of the ways we believe that we're going to have to boost to address this is through early childhood programming and, and pre-K. And in, in the past, we could expect students to come to kindergarten knowing maybe their numbers, count to 10, maybe their letters and so forth, right? Particularly after the pandemic, we cannot depend on kindergartens to come with knowledge nor with social skills to sit in a classroom and be able to work with, with another child. So we believe that one of the responses to the kind of concerns you raised, Mr. Conway, is to double our efforts, redouble our efforts with the youngest of and earliest of our grade levels.
Well, I think this, this also points out that, you know, when we talk about our, our pairs and our tutors, you know, I think it's, it's paramount that we certainly get as many in there, in those classrooms if at all possible. Because as, as we all know, the numbers with, with less numbers of, of students in, you know, the, the grades obviously tend to go up. So if you have more hands-on, shall we say, in that classroom, I mean, that's, I think we're going to have to target this, right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bahu?
I know there's the pandemic, and the pandemic has really set all school districts back. But, you know, this is a report that is, deserves to be looked at. And it's great that we are looking at it. I'm just curious if we could go ahead and get this report quarterly so that we can begin to identify what the growth may be, or semi-annually, so that we can, you know, identify that the school district, district is progressing. I know we're all sitting here for one reason, and it's for the students. And it would be best if we could go ahead and monitor not only your work, but our work so that we can identify, you know, what's working. You know, like, like Ms. Crocker had a very ambitious goal here. It's outstanding. But it's, it would be great to see it in graphs, and it would be great to see the results, you know, quarterly or semi-annually so that we know that we're all doing this together collectively, and it truly does take a village.
I agree, Mr. Bahu, and we're happy to do that. We, we do provide the committee with, with those metrics that you're seeking and many others in what we call the KPI report, Key Performance Indicator Report. And it includes many, many of the, the data that you're referring to and, and similar to the ones in this report. Perhaps the next KPI report will be soon because we'll be, we're finishing mid-year. When we're looking at that, we'll try to address what you're saying. And if there's additional information you'd like, we'll include it.
Great, thank you.
Now, 9.5, response to motion by Mr. Rossi, October 16th, 2024, regarding sports programs at middle schools.
Yes, I also thank you very much for this report. I know that there are driving sports throughout this city, but I know that especially one of our friends, Andre Lopez, was looking for some more support in terms of intramurals over in the Senaval area and the volleyball court. And I just think, besides it growing and being great, I think more funding needs to go towards a lot of intramural sports through more of the underserved areas in Lowell. Like, I feel, I feel like some areas are more well-nourished than some other areas. And I feel like funding could make the difference in that. And I think that connection to sports and academics, you know, sometimes that's all our kids have. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I think this is great that we've expanded the middle school sports. My question is, are we providing transportation? Or is it really incumbent upon the students? And I, I'm not sure which ones are new. I know we always had cross-country. When did we, or what's the newest ones? Didn't we always have basketball, too, or?
For the, I'm, I'm looking at the list, Ms. Doherty, and for the most part, yes, busing is provided. So for instance, So for instance, for cross-country, busing is provided to Shed Park for, say, basketball or volleyball, you know, the Sullivan against the Wang. Well, whichever school is home, there's no buses needed, but the other school students are bused, yes.
I am thinking specifically about the citywide schools because I know, like, with the Knowledge Bowl, that was a disadvantage. If we didn't have busing for the kids, it was hard to be able to put together a team, you know, especially some of our schools that are, you know, maybe not in the richer areas of the city, that parents don't have the flexibility to come by and pick your child up. So when we talk about equity, and I think, you know, offering equal opportunity, as Mr. Rossi says, some areas maybe had more robust programs if we have consistency or increased funding or whatever we need. But I do think transportation is a fact.
I'm happy to say transportation is provided. To Mr. Rossi's point, I wanted to mention, I do think we can put more resources towards it. And there's one athletic director for the city, and he's Mr. Olet at Lowell High School. He does a phenomenal job, and he works very, very hard, but he's one. And if we want to increase the programming towards middle schools, he's anxious to do so. After all, it's a wonderful feeder program to the high school, but I think we need to provide him with an assistant. That's not for, you know, funding tonight, but we may come back to you at budget season to make recommendations in that regard.
If I could just add, we had a speaker tonight. Our spotlight on excellence was an elementary school program with athletics. And we all know all the different ways that we can engage our students to get them excited about coming to school. Sports is one of them.
That was a volunteer program.
So was art, music, and theater.
Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to thank Dr. Roy for the, for this report here. This is extremely important because, you know, when you talk about sports, it's, and we had the example here tonight, at the high school alone, I mean, we have, I think it's like 38, 40 different sports, and there's approximately 1,000 students involved with that. And also approximately 1,000 students involved with middle school, with all of them together. So, I mean, this is, the middle school is the feeder system to the sports program. But there's something that's, it's more important than just sports. I mean, the fact is that if you're playing sports at the high school, number one, you can't play unless you have good attendance. You can't play unless you have good grades, and you can't play unless you have good discipline. So it's basically the three that it's needed. This is something that we want and that we're looking for. And I think it's so very important, the program, it's not just the sport, it's not just the win or the loss and so forth, and yes, that's a big part of it, too. But the fact is, I happen to believe, as an administrator for a number of years, it was one of the best dropout prevention programs that we have, and I've often said that. Now, saying that, that doesn't exclude the, you know, that doesn't include the arts, ROTC, different after-school programs that certainly are extremely helpful. Because kids, when they reach this age, they gravitate, there's a niche that they gravitate to, whether it's sports, chess, ROTC, whatever, arts, and so forth. So what Mr. Superintendent just said, which I think is extremely important, the fact you have one, you have one person, athletic director, that's running the show. But the fact is, we need somebody in the middle school to help coordinate. And that might be, you know, sit down and try to figure out, you know, what is the best method going forward so that we can get the most out of the middle school, too. All right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Same motion, Mr. Rossi?
Yes, same motion. Just one very last comment. And I did notice in the permission to enter that youth yoga and mindfulness, with yoga with Chuck, which I love, I did my yoga teacher training with Chuck Raffoni, and I love him, and I think he'll be great with all the kids. But like, more programs like that. I go to SLS Fitness myself, I signed my sign up for boxing, but I live over in Senneville. And I paid for a whole month for him. We never got to because it was at 4:30, he gets home at 3:30, and to get across the city at that time was so much. So if we can get programs like SLS Boxing over to Senneville areas and programs like that could make a huge difference for these kids that want to learn how to defend themselves, who want to learn strategies or just to relax. Thank you.
9.7, response to motion by Mr. Bahu on November 6, 2024, regarding K-4 students not taking Chromebooks home.
Dr. Roy, thank you for this report. It's very well written, and it's good news to know that we have to send home iPads to many of our special education students, so that's not something that we're looking to go ahead and satisfy. It's also good to know that 90% of our students do not take Chromebooks home, which basically means that they're in the building and that they're not home playing on their device. I see one thing here that sort of, you know, makes me question. It's something about Chrome cards, $1,500 to $1,700 apiece. And it seems like 90% of the Chromebooks are not going home, so my guess is we probably already have Chrome cards within the school district. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. So there's 90%. So, and then I noticed that seven out of 10 school districts do not send the Chromebooks home at all. So there's only like three school districts that, and it looks like you'd like to go ahead and implement the idea of not sending the Chromebooks home, simply because students can have a social life, they can do their homework by pen and paper as they always have, they can read their books and such like that. And it doesn't seem like there'll be a big cost to the district, maybe some Chrome cards, but realistically, the breakages of the possible Chromebooks may begin to become reduced, and we will not have to purchase many more because of the care that's being taken at the schools themselves. Is that correct?
So yes and no, so it's not as simple as how you just outlined it. So the majority of the carts that are currently in our schools were purchased by our schools. So the distinction in the funding would be that if we put a policy in place, what we are doing then is saying that as a district, we would want carts in every elementary school, which then means that the district level, we would have to make sure that we have the funding for the Chromebooks at the elementary level. And then the other half of the no-for, your response, has more to do with that the majority of the Chromebooks that we are, as we track, that are not working are at the middle school level or our secondary level, not at our elementary level.
Sure, and I realize that it is in the middle school level, but it would be nice if we, the kids did not take them home, and then we could sort of shift them up, because I know Chromebooks generally have about a seven-year, six-to-seven-year lifespan, and it would be nice if there was like less breakage. But I'm also hearing that there are Chromebooks already within the school district, within the schools themselves, that we would not have to purchase. It's not something we would have to go out and buy four Chromebooks per building or six Chromebooks per building. We're just looking at maybe a few, I'm sorry, a few Chrome carts, a few Chrome carts per building. Now we're just looking at only maybe having to buy a few that would preserve our Chromebooks themselves. So anyway, thank you for this report. It looks like the school district may be moving forward in not sending home the Chromebooks. And then we can begin to go ahead and maybe assume some cost savings and begin to sort of have our students have a little bit more social lives themselves. So thank you for this.
9.8, FY26 Budget Development Calendar Draft.
And school committee members, I'm going to turn this one over to Dr. Pinto, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance.
Thank you, good evening. So the purpose of this budget development calendar, I wanted to share it with you. This is a draft calendar that we've begun work on, and it's really to provide a structured timeline for the district going forward. There are lots of reasons for providing it. We wanted to establish clear deadlines for our constituents so that they know what their responsibilities are and that they can meet them on time. We wanted to enhance a little bit of the coordination and communication, so we wanted them to know what their roles and timelines were. We wanted to ensure legal compliance and so be in line with Massachusetts law. We wanted to promote transparency, and so we wanted this calendar to be publicly accessible. We wanted people to be informed about the process. We wanted them to have opportunities to participate in the process. We wanted to improve efficiency, and so this kind of, this does streamline the process for Lowell Public Schools, and we did want to support our strategic goals. So that's the purpose behind the budget calendar. I'll just highlight a couple of key points per month because you've got the calendar with you. If you have questions, you can certainly pose them or send them to me. I'll be happy to field them. In January, we've begun the enrollment forecasting, and so that's underway. The governor's numbers are expected at the end of the month, so on January 22, we're expecting the governor to release the preliminary budget. In February, we're looking to offer some school site council training, and then we'll have a budget kickoff towards the end of the month, second week in February, perhaps. We're targeting the third week, sorry, the 3rd of February to coincide with an all-admin meeting. We're also going to have kicking off our formal budget meetings post the February break, so we'll be meeting with all the school sites to discuss their current year budget, open POs, and making sure that vendors are paid on time, looking at their position control, and then getting their input for the FY26 budget. In March, we'll furnish a school committee with an update, a budget update, on how things are going, and we'll be, we're aiming to send out the budget books at the end of the month. So towards the end of March, we'll have a draft sent out to the printer and then budget books for March 26. In April, so we're intending to move the process up a little bit. Last year, it was held in May where you had the hearings, the public hearings, and approval of the budget. This time, we're aiming for April and prior to the April break for several reasons. So bad bills have been an issue year over year, and so we're looking to focus on closing out the year successfully here, so ensuring that we've received all our invoices from vendors and work towards closing out FY25 successfully. We'll be able to concentrate on that towards the end of the month. So this presents some challenges, right? The budget development calendar, a couple of things are happening. We are working on the new budget for the new fiscal year for FY26, but also trying to close out FY25, so bringing that to a close. We're also looking forward our projections for '26, '27, and beyond. So all those things are happening towards the end of the year, and so we're looking to ease the purchasing crunch that sometimes happens at the end of June. The city is also freezing, you know, as they close out FY25 and begin FY26, the rollover to FY26, there's a freeze that happens at the end of June and into the first couple of weeks of July. We want to make sure it's a very smooth process. And so that is the budget, this is the draft, the first draft of the budget calendar.
Mr. Doherty?
Thank you. And just one quick concern that comes to my mind is the school site council training, which hasn't been determined yet in the beginning of February, and then literally within a month, we're going to be presented with the budgets to approve, the school site budgets, right? I'm just concerned that we give enough time for the school site councils because they are a volunteer committee of staff and parents. That would be my own, and I'm not recommending something other than just to look at that again, and if we can give more time for that process. We have become very reliant. I know it's kind of been used, well, this is what the school said they wanted, so I want them to have the time to really give some thought to what they're going to be requesting for their budgets. And I'm all in favor of doing whatever we can to make that transition, that we pay all our bills within the fiscal year that we possibly can because that has been an ongoing issue that certainly was worse the last couple of years than I had seen, let's say, 10 years ago. You know, it's just, I know it's been a concern, ongoing concern. So whatever we can do to alleviate that would be great, but my only caveat is to make sure that we have time for those school site councils.
Mr. Bahu?
And I just don't know if these dates are set in stone or if it's more like a draft and we're sort of going to progress with it and see how it actually comes, rolls out. Because I know April 16 comes pretty quickly in respect to developing a $250 million budget. So, you know, if it takes a little longer than that, you know, let's do the very best we can and then sort of just roll it out in the proper time. I know the school committee does not, I'm sorry, the city council does not vote on our budget until sometime in June, so there will be some dates there that we would be able to sort of utilize for, you know, for a little buffer time if we need so. So, but thank you for this report.
Thank you.
9.9, personal report. Anything? Great. Need a motion to accept the reports of the Superintendent, 9.1 to 9.9, reports of progress by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call. Holes and fear to say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Aye.
It's a clerical error, not from the mayor. 9.10, home education. Need a motion to approve the home education by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty? Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin? Mia Rook?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway? Mr. Rossi? Six yeas, one absent.
10 new business, 10.1, approval to accept and expend allocated FY25 awards. Motion to approve by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think it's worth pointing out that there was a clerical error in the first version of this budget request. The amount is less than it was originally. In the first version, Dr. Pinto provided you with an updated version that I believe the figure, I don't have it in front of me, but yes, it's $149,709 is the correct figure that you have in front of you at the moment.
Still on FY25 awards, right?
Yes.
Superintendent, is that what we talked about?
Yes.
Does Jerry Nutter have a copy of this?
Roll call.
Ms. Doherty? Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin? Mia Rook?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Six yeas, one absent.
10.2, budget modification request, the motion to approve budget modification of $149,709 by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin? Mia Rook?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Six yeas.
10.3, first reading, Chapter 74 CTE Admission Policy Draft, the motion to weigh the first reading and to send the next scheduled school meeting for approval by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty? Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin? Mia Rook?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Six yeas, one absent.
Motion by Ms. Doherty to bundle 11-1 through 11-6, seconded by Mr. Conway. Holes and fear to say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 11.1, overnight request, POG School Visit Springfield, Mass. 11-2, overnight request Lowell High School, Air Force ROTC, Daytona Beach, Florida. 11-3, overnight request Lowell High School Outdoor Adventure Club in Russell, Mass. 11-4, overnight request Conference Indianapolis. 11-5, overnight request Ops Science Ed, Ops Sci Ed Professional Development Workshop, Norwood, Mass. 11-6, overnight request Parent-Child Plus Conference in Washington, DC. Need a motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty? Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin? Mia Rook?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Six yeas, one absent.
12 personnel, professional personnel, 12.1. Members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 60 sick leave days to Amy Morris Bartlett, Community Partnership School Teacher. The motion to approve by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty? Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin? Mia Rook?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway? Mr. Rossi? Six yeas, one absent.
And before we do adjourn, I think, is it the 16th or 19th?
It was the 15th. It was the 15th.
15th?
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, 19th.
February 19th, this year falls, that meeting falls on School Vacation Week. I know a couple of members won't be around, so I don't know if there's going to be a motion to cancel that meeting. By Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Six yeas.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Mr. Conway, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, just quickly, it was my pleasure to attend the Behavioral Science and Environmental Science Research Symposium at Lowell High School last Friday. It really was an incredible partnership between Lowell High School and Middlesex Community College. And the symposium crossed, which I thought was very impressive, three courses, two departments, and more than 140 students. And to take a look at those projects were absolutely incredible. So I just wanted to give a shout-out that, you know, they did a great job. And by the way, one of the projects, our very own Lowell High School representative right here on the school committee, Ms. Prack, she did one on the, I think it was mercury in fish.
Yes.
Yes. And I was actually disappointed, because she told me that the worst fish was swordfish, and that's my favorite. So now that's been eliminated. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. But anyways, it was a great, a great opportunity. These kids did a great job, and the staff, both from the high school and Middlesex Community College. It was a perfect example of how partnerships really are so successful. Thank you.
Thanks, Conway. Ms. Prack?
I do want to thank Mr. Conway for coming. It was really sweet of him. I was very excited to tell him. I was kind of just going up to people like, hey, do you eat swordfish? It was actually really cool. My topic was mercury and fish. It was actually a really funny story. I went fishing with my brother one weekend, and I came back, and my teacher asked me like, what did you do this weekend? And I told her, yeah, I went fishing out in Townsend with my brother, caught some trout. And she Googled it on, I think the EPA has a "How's My Waterway?", and the river that I fished in was actually impaired. And she was like, oh, what did you do with your fish? And I was like, um, I gave it to my grandmother. She's okay, I think. But, yeah, so I was able to choose a topic that really connected with me, and a lot of my peers, especially my classes, too, we had a discussion. They really liked the topics they chose. And I just thought the symposium was a really good way to research. What we did was a 12-page research paper. It was a good way to research topics that actually interested us. And if you guys have time, next semester, there is another symposium for the same courses. I will be there again. I hope to see some of you.
Ms. Prack, thank you very much. A motion has been made. Alvin Fierz, say aye. Opposed. Have a good evening.